October 2nd, 2017, meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, help me, Father, once again, we are asked to do the work of the people of Anarundel County. Please help us to make the best decisions we can. And also I'd like to acknowledge a moment of silence for the folks out in the terrible incident that just happened out in Las Vegas, Nevada.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to take this golden opportunity once again to introduce myself. My name is John Grasso on behalf of myself and staff and the entire council, but most of all, on behalf of the people of Anarundel County, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Sincerely, I trust that you find it a most informative and enjoyable meeting. With that being said, Madam Secretary, you want to please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marsick, I know you're around here somewhere. Do you want to come out? Message from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick, in the county executive's office. As part of the county executive's effort to battle the opioid epidemic in the county, I wanted to give you the council and other constituents another update on the Not My Child program on behalf of Nancy Schrum, who leads this effort for the county. Ms. Schrum, last updated to council on April 3rd. The Not My Child program provides the facts on the abuse of prescription drugs and the escalation of heroin use in our communities. Ms. Schrum and the Not My Child team have worked together to educate parents, families, and communities on the impacts of addiction. The team has been in front of 79 groups of people, and is scheduled to present to nine more audiences in the next few months. The team has also worked with some of our counterparts in counties such as Queen Anne's and Calvert County. In addition, the team has presented to various conferences and other businesses, including folks at NSA, as well as Northrop Crummon. The latest partnership for Not My Child is with our Department of Recreation and Parks, where the team explains to coaches how to have appropriate conversations about addiction from the prevention side. In addition, there's a prevention letter that all rec and park team participants have to get, their parents to sign in order to participate. And the school health nurses are also providing supplemental education at various meet the coach nights, coaches' nights, where the parents and the children must attend. I've included that sheet with the packet I gave you tonight for you all to read. And finally, the team has conducted five Facebook Live presentations over the last two months, answering constituent questions from around the county. The Not My Child, the next Not My Child presentation will be October 5th at 7:00 PM at Southern Middle School. And I've also included the list of the upcoming presentations that will be given by the Not My Child team in your packet as well. And all this information can be found on the county website, as well as the county Facebook page.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trump, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marsick, thank you for those updates. Last week, I was not able to attend, but I saw on video the announcement of the Joint Task Force for gang violence. And I noted that Chief Altamieri during his results, or during his remarks, said that the reason he was, that we were able to form this task force now is because he felt that the county, I think the words were, had a handle on the opioid epidemic. And I heard some people comment about that, and I suspect that the chief didn't mean it as if, we don't have to worry about it anymore, but rather, he meant that, you know, his force had enough capacity to deal with both issues. But I wanted, I wanted to give you a chance to clarify on the public record. I mean, does the county have a different stance on the opioid epidemic now than it did a week ago, or do you want to elaborate?
No, not to my knowledge. I think the chief actually clarified that later on to another question.
Oh, he did, okay.
I think it was from Mr. Davis from the Capitol asked that. I think he clarified that and actually spoke to it a little bit more at length.
Okay.
But nothing to my knowledge as far as the change in the policy on that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith. I applaud the administration's efforts with the Not My Child, as well as the opioid effort. Is there any signs that the work that we're doing is making inroads? Are the deaths plateauing off? Are we seeing more increases in folks who are arriving at the police state, or the fire stations? And on top of that, well, I'll let you finish that because I've got another following question after that.
Sure. On the, we are seeing the increase of people showing up at safe stations. And I don't have the details in front of me on those numbers. Unfortunately, I think as the county executive said repeatedly, we're not seeing these deaths plateau sadly. We are continuing to fight, but there's not a silver bullet on this. And we're continuing to work with our partners at the Health Department and Social Services and other county agencies, as well as state agencies, to continue the fight.
Quick question. The safe stations, is it just for opioid and heroin addiction? Could someone who has some other addiction or drug-related abuse or addiction, could they also make use of the safe station?
I'm sure they wouldn't turn anyone away that came in seeking for help, but I can get you more details from the fire chief and find that out.
And when you do, is it possible to make that announcement sort of countywide so that folks who have other addictions, that may not be related to heroin or opioids, but it causes the same sort of effect, whereas, you know, their crime in the neighborhoods or abuse in the household, things like that, that we're open to helping anyone who has an addiction at our, at our safe stations? Because I think, I think there may not, so I think there may not be, I think some people potentially could be turned away if it's not one of those activities. And I just want us to put that on the record that we're not turning away anyone who has an addiction.
I will find out and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we're now going to open up the member, invite members in the audience who signed up before the meeting to address council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Will the following persons please come up to the table, state your name, address for the record? And if there's anyone else who did not sign in, we can do that after the fact. So we're going to start off with first, and don't take any offense if I'm saying your name wrong, but it's done with love. So, first one we have over here looks like Mr. Dan Clemmons. Come on down. Looks like Brooks Sheldemeyer, if I'm saying that right. Lisa Taylor Sororio, Mike Shea, and Vicki, I don't know if this is a Bruce.
Bruce.
They're good, right? Okay. Very good. Thanks, come on down. Please limit your remarks to two minutes. And we're going to start off with Mr. Dan Clemmons.
I'll stand, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Peruca, I stand to advise you that three donations to charitable organizations have been made in your name, and that you have been the inspiration for these donations. A donation of $1,311.10 has been made to the Southern Poverty Law Center. We want you to know that these funds will be used to continue its mission to fight hate, to teach tolerance, to seek justice, and to continue to identify hate groups such as the League of the South. A donation of $1,311 has been made to Planned Parenthood of Maryland. We want you to know that these funds will be used to continue its mission to provide the best healthcare to women in Maryland, and to ensure that it is women who, along with their doctors, get to choose when and whether to have and maintain a pregnancy. Finally, a donation of $1,311 has been made to the Human Rights Campaign Fund. We want you to know that these funds will be used to continue its mission to achieve equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans. HRC Foundation works for a world where lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people are embraced as full members of society at home, at work, and in every community. Signed by me, sincerely Daniel Clemmons, I was the treasurer of the StopHeroutka.com PAC. It is a PAC that we made these donations when we closed it. It does not mean that we will not open the PAC again as needed in the future. Leave a copy of this here. I will also finally comment in my last 28 seconds to the chairman, Council Grasso. I'm Jewish, and I was deeply offended by your invocation this evening, as it excluded me. When you make an invocation that is in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost, you're excluding members of this community, which is the whole purpose of our donations to these groups which oppose hate and which accept everyone.
Okay. Thank you for your time, sir. Our next person is, looks like Brooks Scandelmeyer, if I'm saying that right?
Scandelmeyer.
Scandelmeyer. I know I'm getting there, a little at a time.
Little bit each time.
Thanks for coming out, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and member of the council. For the record, my name is Brooks Scandelmeyer. I'm here to talk a little bit on the new gang initiative on the county executive's office. While I applaud the first steps of this effort, I would like to say that this effort's success is going to be highly dependent upon trust in the Latino community, which the 287G program that we are currently a part of is going to erode away. It is going to make people less likely to report crimes if they fear their immigration status being brought up. I know the county's executive office has said they are not going to focus on that, but these communities are already in a vulnerable position, and they are going to be a lot more hesitant. And unless we really build that trust, much won't be gone about this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. All right, Ms. Lisa Taylor Sororio, am I saying that right?
Oh.
How about that? I'm getting close.
Thanks. My name is Lisa Taylor Sorero. I'm from Shadyside, Maryland. At Shadyside Elementary on September-
Ma'am, one second. I want to give you the address, please. I got Shadyside. You want to give us the whole address, please?
Oh.
Where you live, ma'am? The whole address.
The whole address, 4947 Chestnut Street in Shadyside.
Okay.
At Shadyside Elementary on September 21st, at the first PTO meeting of the school year, parents, grandparents, godparents, and community members who were invited to attend by the PTO president and vice president were stopped at the door. The principal and PTO president did not ask if we were parents or grandparents, but they did ask why we were there to attend the meeting. Many people, including myself, asked to see the bylaws, but were denied. Mr. Casey, the principal, recognizing me as I have worked with him in the past, had said that I could go in originally, but when I asked him why we weren't allowed to mention the cell phone tower they were building at the school, he shut the door in my face. I must stress that no one was rowdy or loud, but the police were called. I have repeated, repeatedly asked for the bylaws since then, as others have, including the police that night, and no one has been given the document. Once the police arrived, they were confused as to why they were called on people just wanting to attend a PTO meeting. They requested the bylaws and were denied. In an email from the regional superintendent, it stated that he would continue to remove people who brought up the tower issue as it is a distraction. To want to be able to express any of my concerns in an appropriate time during the PTO meeting and respectfully request that the PTO consider their neutral stance should not warrant denial or the police presence. You cannot imagine how it felt being locked out of the building.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Mike Shea. Thanks for coming out, sir. Mike Shea.
Red Top Farm, West River Road, Shadyside.
Okay.
I'm also shocked and appalled, and you should be shocked and appalled. Parents were locked out of a parent-teachers organization meeting, the first meeting of the season, with applications and $10 check for the family to be a member. At the door was the parent, the head of the PTO, identifying people of the safety issue, cell tower issue that was planned to be placed in the schoolyard. They were not allowed entrance. The police were called, totally civil, standing at the front door. Probably 15 of us wanted to participate in our children's future, including the safety of our children's future. Before you, I have a press release from the coalition that is against the Shadyside Elementary cell tower. You will see the official position of the Assistant Superintendent of the Schools regarding this. He calls this issue a distraction. This is a safety issue. Education or safety are the main mission of the school board. This is coming from the management. You know I've worked on issues in the community for almost 25 years. This was the most demeaning, the toughest time I've ever had was to be told you can't participate, you can't get in the process, there isn't transparency. Shocked and appalled. I'm shocked and appalled. We will be at the school board, we will be at the parent-teachers organization, and we will participate.
Next person, looks like Ms. Vicki Bruce. Thanks for coming out tonight. Name and address, two minutes, please.
My name's Vicki Bruce. I live in Reva. I don't want to give the street address, thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Peruca, my testimony is directed to you and anyone who supports you. Unfortunately, due to your unrestrained ignorance on the topic of Planned Parenthood, abortion, women's health, and your bigotry toward women of color, and your misogynistic statements about women's reproductive rights, I must speak publicly and directly to you tonight. I'm referencing your recent statement that although you were on the board of a racist organization for a decade or more, that you believe the real racists in America are Planned Parenthood and black women who have abortions. Mr. Peruca, I don't believe you've ever been inside a Planned Parenthood clinic or had a healthcare appointment at one of these excellent medical facilities. I will now explain to you the life-saving medical treatment that Planned Parenthood offers men and women of all colors, sexual orientations, and socioeconomic levels. Planned Parenthood offers more than 300,000 pelvic examinations to screen for cancer per year. They perform anal exams and over 300,000 breast exams a year to detect for cancer and other diseases. Planned Parenthood also screens for prostate cancer. Have you ever had a sexually transmitted disease? It's very common, it's nothing to be ashamed of. But I believe we would all agree it's imperative that someone with an STD seek treatment so that they can be treated, recover if possible, and protect future partners. Thankfully, Planned Parenthood treats and screens at a rate of 4.2 million tests per year for vaginal warts, syphilis, gonorrhea, chlamydia, herpes, and HIV/AIDS. As for abortion, Planned Parenthood offers legal and safe abortions. Since you seem so ignorant of what that means, here I am, the face of abortion, white with a postgraduate college education, a middle-class economic status. Myself, my friends of all colors have used our human rights and our legal rights that we have had in this country for more than 50 years to make our own decision about our reproductive futures. Planned Parenthood has been my lifeline and the lifeline of millions of others.
Okay, our next group of people is going to be, we're going to call down Ms. DeJohn Gay, is it?
Thank you.
Lee Frazier, come on down. Letitia Hicks. Kelly Price. And looks like Michael Gendel, thanks for coming down tonight. Okay, we're going to start off, it looks like if I'm saying it right, Mr. DeJohn Gay. Two minutes, please, and name and address. Thanks for coming out again.
It's Dewan Gay. It's 409 Hill Top Lane, Annapolis, Maryland. Dear Roy Moore, I'm sorry, dear Michael Peruca, I was torn, I was torn on my decision to show up and speak about the blatant racism and white supremacy that you've oozed over the past few months. This disgusting shine of leadership does nothing but slow down the progression of our county. Mr. Peruca, I understand the period of white grief you, you are in, and why you felt the need to put the focus on the abortions in the African-American community. This grief is something often pulled out when white supremacists feel their dominance is being threatened. They plead ignorance of black life and the suffering of black culture, or simply deny, rewrite, or dilute America's racial history. We're all, we all know you're a racist at this point, and there's no, no changing that. So now I turn my attention to the African-American community, and in particular, the African-American youth you attempted to turn, drag down with you. Hey, black child, do you know who you are, who you really are? Do you know you can be what you want to be if you try to be what you can be? Hey, black child, do you know where you're going, where you're really going? Do you know you can learn what you want to learn if you try to learn what you can learn? Hey, black child, do you know you are strong? I mean, really strong. Do you know you can do what you want to do if you try to do, what you can do? Hey, black child, be what you can be, learn what you must learn, do what you can do, and tomorrow your nation will be what you want it to be. Hey, black child, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gay. Okay, our next person, looks like Leah Frazier. Please name and address, and two minutes, please.
Leah Frazier, Gambrels, Maryland. Councilman Peruca, I'm here to address your recent statements to the media that real racism is in the quote-unquote targeted killing of African-American babies by Planned Parenthood, and Margaret Singer. And I'm also here to address your support of Roy Moore in the GOP primary in Alabama. First of all, your statements on what real racism is are problematic for so many reasons. As a white male, it is extraordinarily condescending for you to define what real racism is. You call Confederate statues fake racism, but were your ancestors enslaved? Are you forced to look at monuments to the men who fought to keep your ancestors enslaved? No. So you have no basis to tell people of color whether the pain they experience is a result of real racism or not. Second, you define real racism as abortion of black babies. You blame Planned Parenthood and Margaret Singer, but what you're really saying is that the problem is black women, reinforcing dangerous stereotypes and intentionally are not fostering a more hostile environment for all women. If you really cared about racism, you would not have been a member of a secessionist organization when we all know that the Civil War was fought to preserve slavery and subjugation. Do you know what a leading cause of abortion is? It's lack of access to contraception and birth control. It's lack of economic opportunity. It's lack of access to quality healthcare. What have you done to make sure that this world is a more hospitable place for children and for women, and to make sure that women don't have to make the hard choice about their reproductive future based on their economic resources? Signing on to anti-hate resolution, the anti-hate resolution was a great first step, but you're distancing, you're distancing yourself from the League of the South is ineffective when you refuse to acknowledge the League's racist platform. It rings hollow. You are an attorney and an elected official-
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Letitia Hicks. Two minutes, please, name and address. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Letica Hicks, 2468 Chelmsford Drive, Crofton. I'm here to address Mr. Peruca, and to talk about his recent, most recent racist statements when he made the claim that real racism, quote-unquote, is the targeted killing of African-American babies. Not only is that statement ridiculous, and the notion that he cares about black lives is laughable, not to mention his desperate attack on women's reproductive rights, all in one sad statement. Mr. Peruca went on to say, what could be more racist than a national program designed to eliminate black people? It's called systemic racism. It affects all areas of our lives negatively, that includes education, housing, and law enforcement. You are a contributor. You and others like you are a virus to this county, because you are unable to treat all of her residents equally, equitably. Whether you believe yourself to be a racist or not, it doesn't matter. We hear what you say, we see what you do, we see who you are associated with, like people like Roy Moore. If you love this county, or at least some of the people in it, respect our call for you to step down. You don't represent us. As an African-American woman, you do not represent me with your statements. Your continued presence on this council makes the good people of this county look bad. Please step down.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Okay, and let's see, we have Kelly Price. Thanks for coming out.
253 Way Crossway, Arnold. I testified at our last council meeting, my concern over Councilman Peruca's involvement with League of the South. I tried my best in my testimony to communicate to Mr. Peruca and to the council, my alarm, my concern, my freaked-outness about his association with the League. I did all I could to, as my high school students would, would say, lay it out and get real. I truly wanted a response from him, so I emailed in my testimony, and I asked specifically for some answers. After a follow-up reminder from me a few days ago, Mr. Peruca replied to me this morning that he had already made a public statement on League of the South, and that he had nothing to add. On my concern about his position on secession, he suggested I read a book he recommended about the legality and efficacy of secession from the United States of America. That constituted the whole of the, the content of the conversation. I also testified our last meeting on Mr. Grasso's comments on the ACLU. Soon after, I also emailed our council chair, including specific questions about his recent public, public statement, that he does not agree with, quote, "anything the ACLU does", end quote. I asked Mr. Grasso in this email message if he truly did disagree with the ACLU's history of civil rights and liberties defenses, or if he had been unaware of the ACLU's historic work, or if he had merely spoken impulsively and erroneously. I hoped he would respond to my alarm, my concern over his statement. The reply I received this afternoon read in its entirety, quote, "That's all I have to say on the subject. Thanks for writing." I'm pretty shocked by these responses, by the lack of concern shown from my legitimate questions, my fear, my alarm, that our elected officials are failing to do all they can to demonstrate commitment to racial equality and social justice, especially when given an ideal and specific opportunity to do so. You guys have power, and it's upon you to reassure us that you protect those-
Thank you, Ms. Price.
...have less power.
Okay, next person we have, Michael Gendel, is it? Thanks for coming out, sir. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Michael Gendel, Pasadena, Maryland. And I too would like to speak to Michael Peruca about the League of the South. On June 19th, council meeting, he read a statement about his membership in the League and said, "I believe the group to be integrated and nondiscriminatory in regard to race." The League of the South has a photo gallery on their website, lots of photos, big photos of, thank you, rallies and protests. Every single person in those photos is white, every one. Can he explain why, given that, that he believed the League was integrated and nondiscriminatory? In July of 2012, he gave a speech at the League's National Conference. He ended by asking the audience to stand for his National Anthem, and led them in Dixie. Even the Washington Football Team, owned by a known racist, Clark Griffiths, stopped singing Dixie in Griffith Stadium sometime after World War II, the Great War. He led them in singing Dixie. Hunter Wallace, the editor of the Occidental Descender White Nationalist Online magazine, was also at that conference in 2012. In an article he wrote, I didn't see any blacks there. Can Mr. Peruca explain why this was, given that he believed the League to be integrated and nondiscriminatory? The answer is obvious, but one that he won't admit. The League of the South is now and still a white supremacy group, was a white supremacy group when he was a member. It's time for him to take responsibility for being a member of a hate group. And it's time to erase this stain on the council, which should be an egalitarian council for all. Please resign. Beat the clock.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's see, we have a couple more people. Looks like Ms. Eve Hurwitz, and looks like Ms. Jasmine Jamison. And I've got seats for, okay, three more people that if they want to come down and have them sign up on the list. If you've got anything you want to say, please take a seat right there. Okay, so we're going to start off with Ms. Eve Hurwitz.
Yes.
Thanks for coming out. In two minutes, and name and address, please.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. Eve Hurwitz, Green Top Court, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here for two reasons. One, to tell everybody and invite you to two vigils that we're having in Annapolis for Las Vegas, Wednesday night at 7:00 at Lawyers Mall, and the county council and all members are invited to come speak and attend. AnnapolisRally.com, you can get there quickly. Saturday night, there's also a vigil. So Wednesday night is the Anarundel County Indivisible and March on Maryland Vigil, and Saturday night, there is a Progressive Maryland Vigil, 6:00 at Lawyers Mall. So that was Wednesday night, 7:00, Saturday night, 6:00. Second reason I'm here, Councilman Peruca. I'm here on behalf of one of my good friends, who is one of your constituents, lives, her name is Illeneat Evers on Joyce Lane in Arnold. She is having an unbelievable amount of construction happening within hundreds of feet of her house. It starts at 6:00 in the morning and goes until past dinner, six days a week. She is exhausted, because she has to stay up late for her work and her family. She has cracks in her walls that had, weren't there before the construction started. She has called your office repeatedly with no help. She calls the police almost every day with no help. Somebody has to do something to help her, because she is literally falling apart. When I see her, she cries. She can't stop crying, because she's exhausted and depressed and extremely concerned. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming out, ma'am. Ms. Jamison, name and address, please, in two minutes.
Jasmine Jamison, Arnold, Maryland. I was going to talk about something else, but then I came across this in the Anarundel Patriot. The Internal Revenue Service has revoked the nonprofit status for the Institute on the Constitution, Inc., IOTC, a Pasadena-based nonprofit co-founded by Michael Anthony Peruca. The IOTC automatically lost its nonprofit status on May 15, 2017, for failing- The IOTC automatically lost its nonprofit status on May 15, 2017, for failure to file federal tax returns since filing its Article of incorporation on August 26, 2014. The status of all past and future tax-deductible donations made to this former federal and state-recognized, not-for-profit charitable organization are now called into question as a matter of public trust. The IRS provides an online exempt organization select check tool that states the federal tax exemption of this organization, IOTC, was automatically revoked for its failure to file a Form 990- Series return or notice for three consecutive years, and that donors may rely on this list in determining deductibility of their contributions. At the time of this writing, Peruca's website, www.theamericanview.com, is still soliciting donations as tax-deductible. There are several ways that you can financially partner with IOTC. "All donations are tax-deductible," the website reads. A search of the Maryland Charities database reveals that in addition to failing to file federal tax returns with the IRS, IOTC never registered as a charitable organization in Maryland. The Maryland Secretary of State says charity registration is required prior to the commencement of solicitations. Under the Maryland Solicitations Act, subtitle 4, Charitable Organizations, 6-401, registration required. Upon further review—I—well, would you like a copy of it?
Thank you, Ms. Jamison. If you'd like to, you're welcome to pass it up.[696.51][696.51](APPLAUSE). Sir, name, address, and two minutes, please. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Adrian Fair, 4709 St. Evans.
Hold on there, sir. There you go.
Baltimore, Maryland. This is also for you, Councilman Peruca, and the whole council. I grew up in a household with—I got passed around. My mother had abortions, my aunts had abortions, my sisters had abortions, and my cousins had abortions, and they are all sick from them. Abortion is murder. It is cold-blooded murder, not so much by the women, because the women are just ignorant of what they are doing.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Stop my time, please.
No, you'll stop your time. You can get your stuff right now, sir, and you can move yourself right outside here because we're not going to tolerate that kind of language in here. Please remove yourself from the chambers.
You're a joke.
Leave the chamber, sir.
You're a joke.
Leave the chamber, sir.
Get the stuff in.
I'm leaving anyway. This guy's a joke.
Walk.
Somebody from Baltimore here talking about inappropriate—
Okay, start the man's clock again, please. Just let—it—continue what you were saying, sir. Go ahead. Excuse me.
This guy is a fucking joke. I can't believe it. No, 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 Baltimore, please hold on.
Ma'am.
Can you just—
Please leave the—please close the door, please.
Respectfully, I'm asking.
You had your two minutes. Sir, go ahead.
But I also had a child of mine aborted, and I wanted to blame the woman so bad, but I was wrong. The main cause of abortion is not lack of healthcare. The main cause of abortion is fornication, adultery, and just casual sex. People who are irresponsible. That is the main cause of abortion. Where you find people who are wanting with hedonistic behavior, you find a high amount of abortion. Planned Parenthood, founded by Margaret Sanger, her stated purpose was to eliminate—the to eliminate the dark races of America and the rest of the earth, period. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your two minutes and apologize for interrupting.
No, no problem.
Ma'am.
Oh, and I have a Roy Moore button right here.
There you go.
I'll be giving them out next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, thanks for coming out. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Vicki Gibson, Annapolis. I am appalled at the level of ignorance that exists in our county and that we just listen to as an example of that. I'm appalled at the fact that you seem to be more outraged at someone's perceived inappropriate conduct than your own or than your fellow councilpersons. I'm personally offended that I, as a black woman in this county, would have to be subjected to the nonsense, to the ignorance. You said, Councilperson Peruca, that you were not a racist, but everything that you do speaks of racism. You shame on you. Shame on you, Count—Chairman Grasso. I mean, it's appalling. How do you sleep at night? How do you just listen to people attack others like that and not show any interest? You know, he didn't—he didn't throw abortion on the table. He used it as a manipulative opportunity to take advantage of trying to get the limelight off of him to turn onto something that was controversial. That's wrong. It's unfair manipulation. He hasn't apologized for any of his inappropriate behavior. You haven't apologized for any of your inappropriate behavior. Shame on you. This is terrible. It's terrible. And what's even worse is that you don't believe that we have a right to a freedom of speech, and you're sitting up here just acting like you're tolerating it. What point is it that we come and we talk to a hole in the ball?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Okay, well, let's see. Moving forward.[1005.23][1005.23](APPLAUSE). Is there—pardon me? Okay. Sir, come on down. Mr. Lancaster, name and address in two minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Spear Lancaster. I live at 1188 Bacon Ridge Road, and I basically had been reading about what I've just witnessed the last half an hour or so, and I thought I'd come and offer my condolences to the county council who have to put up with the most ill-hatred and uncivil talk. I—I—I'm 84 years old. I was born and raised in Maryland. I've been living in Annapolis County for 50 years. I've never seen anything like this, this personal vendetta and the glee and chow-like thrill. It's like throwing rocks at frogs and watching them jump or something. I don't know what they expect to get out of it. But you know, I'm amazed that people tell you, the county council, that you're indifferent, you don't care. Reminds me of the psychiatrist. I had this young man who had really problems, and his parents brought him into the psychiatrist, and the psychiatrist is testing him. He shows him a tree. He said, "What does that remind you of? The kid says sex." He showed him a picture of a boat. He said, "What does it remind you of?" It says sex. Showed him an apple. He said, "What's—it says, 'Everything reminds you of sex.'" He says, "It's your fault. You keep showing me the dirty pictures." I—I think these people have totally lost their focus and their perspective, and I'm not here to protect my good friend, Michael Peruca. I've known his uncle, his father back in '63. I've known his mother. I know his brother. These are all honorable people. To my knowledge, they've been productive, and they do their best, and of course, like everybody else, they make their faults. But I do want to bring you some good news. You know, I've been involved with charter schools now for 15 years. We have the first charter school in Maryland in Annapolis County, 2005. We still have it. We're still forced to keep the same number of pupils, 454, and we ask—we've—parents have asked for it K through 5. We've been turned down. We moved into a new building. The state said we can put 700 people in there. We've been denied.
Sorry, Mr. Lancaster. You're going to have to come back and finish the story in the next meeting, okay? Thank you for your time, though.[1147.51][1147.51](APPLAUSE). Okay, is there any item or any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I motion that the partial readings of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
So move a second.
Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of September 18, 2017.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman John Grasso at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 1, Southern Maryland.
All right, may I motion to approve the minutes of September 18, 2017?
So move a second.
I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes of September 18, 2017 stands approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8317, An Ordinance Concerning Article 2, Branches of County Government, Executive and Judicial Branches. Bill Number 8417, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Wholesale Trade, Warehousing, and Storage Establishments in Commercial Districts in the BWI Fort Meade Growth Area. Bill Number 8517, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Chickens in Residential Districts. Bill Number 8617, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Licensed Premises of Licensed Dispensaries of Medical Cannabis.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7117 as amended.
Bill Number 7117 is amended, an ordinance concerning capital budget, Venice Beach Shore Erosion Control District, New Capital Project and Appropriation.
All right. Okay, we have Mr. Marzick here on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick. The county executive's office will be at the table. Tommy Adebu from Budget Office and Kinley Bray from the Office of Law. Bill 7117 was before you at the last meeting. This creates and funds a new shore erosion control project. This project has received a 20-year interest-free loan from Department of Natural Resources. We would ask you to vote favorably on this bill tonight.
All right. Any questions in the council? Seeing none. We're now going to open up public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If anybody wants to come down, please state your name and address. All right, seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7117 as amended.
Bill Number 7117 is amended, an ordinance concerning capital budget, Venice Beach Shore Erosion Control District, New Capital Project and Appropriation.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 7117 as amended.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Prut—I'm sorry, Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 7117 as amended is passed.
Aye.
You can call Grasso.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grasso.
That's okay. Aye. I got it in there.
You should abstain.
Did anybody else notice? That's all I wanted to know.
Bernie did, right?
Okay. Good. Madam Secretary, continue your pitch.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 7117 as amended is passed.
All right, very good. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7517.
Bill Number 7517, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Wholesale Bakeries.
Okay, administration.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick. The county executive's office. With me at the table is Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning, Kinley Bray from the Office of Law. Bill 7517 will allow wholesale bakeries as a permitted use in industrial zones W1, W2, and W3. Currently, this use is only permitted in the C4 zoning district. This change will increase opportunities for these businesses in the county, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Smith for cosponsoring this bill.
Tag me on for a cosponsor. Everybody likes a good donut.
We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Mr. Smith, just to reiterate, certainly excited about sponsoring any effort that encourages and allows businesses to set up shop here in Anarundale County. I think we have sort of gone through great extents to sort of open a door to these companies, and so bakeries and industrial areas sort of make sense. This warehouse, it makes sense to me, and so I was certainly supportive of this company trying to come in to do that. Thank you. Very good, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Smith, who was it? I just—I didn't hear it.
What's the name of the—
Mr. Walker, the Economic Development, I've been working with Crest Hill Bakery, this company.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, anybody else? All right, we're going to now open up the public hearing on 7517. I'm going to keep your remarks to two minutes if anybody wants to chime in. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 7517. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7517.
An ordinance—Bill Number 7517, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Wholesale Bakeries.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 7517.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 7517 is passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7617.
Bill Number 7617, An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Administration.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick. The county executive's office will be at the table. Lynn Miller and Cindy Carrier from Planning and Zoning, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I believe there's other staff in the audience as well. Bill 7617 is the triennial update to the county's water and sewer master plan as required by state law. The proposed plan includes updates and all the data is needed, including new water and sewer supply and demand projections. Maps were updated to include all new and proposed facilities and infrastructure. The plan also recommended several map amendments to change water and/or sewer categories, area boundaries, or service categories in order to allow for the extension of utilities where appropriate and to improve the efficiency of our operating systems. I provided counsel with these maps and all the amendments last week. We'd be happy to answer any specific questions if you have them tonight. Upon approval by the council, this plan will be submitted to MDE for state review and approval, and we do have an amendment to offer at the appropriate time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Marzick, quick question. As we get into the general development plan, a lot of it is going to focus on what we, Anarundale County, looks like in 20 years, 2040, for example. Do you know if this piece of legislation, to some extent, has been sort of quickly compared to that? Because if we're going to grow or shrink in certain areas, obviously, I think a lot of it will be dependent on the sewage system, the infrastructure, if you will, and this is going to be a big part of the development plan, the general development plan. So I was curious how this potentially is going to align up with that in the future or if we even looked at that from, you know, at least five- or 10-year time span.
Sure, I'll defer to Ms. Miller and Ms. Carrier from Planning and Zoning on this. I know that the water sewer master plan is an integral part of the general development plan, and obviously, this is done every three years, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah, yes, Lynn Miller. The water sewer plan is updated approximately every three years. Yes, we do take water sewer planning into consideration when we do the general development plan. We did in the 2009 GDP, and we'll be doing so again. Assessing the impacts of any growth, additional growth that's planned on our infrastructure is a big part of the planning process when we do the tenure conference of plan. And do you want to add on to that?
Yeah, that covers it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Miller, there's only one proposed change in District 6, and you and I had some email correspondence about that. I had one follow-up question. You explained that the proposal to move that to planned service comports with the current zoning of R2, I think. If a sewer status is changed on a property, does that have any property tax implications typically? Is that something that you would be aware of? Because—and the reason I'm asking is because we had talked about whether the property owners had been notified or not, and I just want to know if all of a sudden it was possible they got a bigger tax bill and they wondered why, you know?
No, it should not have any impact, to my knowledge, on their current property taxes.
Because it's based on the zoning generally, right?
Right, right.
they got a bigger tax bill and they wondered why, you know?
No, it should not have any impact, to my knowledge, on their current property tax.
Because it's based on the zoning generally, right?
Right. No, it could have an impact on the resale value of the property if the owners were going to put it on the market.
Right.
And a prospective buyer, say, wanted to subdivide it and knew that it was already in the planned service category, so they weren't going to have to go through that process.
Okay.
I think that's where it would have the impact, but it shouldn't have an impact on the current assessment.
On the assessment, okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We're now open to public hearing on 7617. If anybody wants to chime in, two minutes, name and address. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 7617. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7617.
Bill Number 7617, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Any discussion? Okay. We have an amendment here. So Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment changes the sewer service category for property located along the Joel's Road from no public service to planned service.
All right. Motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this changes the sewer service category from no planned service to planned service and edits the corresponding map for the Broadneck SSA. This is the property where Maryland Environmental Service is located. We had worked with Councilman Pruski to this. We unfortunately didn't have the... In time for the actual bill, so that's why we're offering amendment tonight. We also plan to have other amendments. I'll speak now, some of my time's not cut off, but at the next council meeting related to this bill. So if you all have constituents who have reached out, please let us know, as it does take time to prepare these amendments, and Planning and Zoning can work with you all on these amendments.
Okay. Anybody else? Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
All righty. Bill 7617 is amended, we heard on October 16, 2017. Okay. Let's see. We've got a bunch of resolutions, so we're going to be holding a joint public hearing for Resolutions Number 37-17 through 40-17. And of course, we'll vote independently of each one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3717 through 40-17.
Resolution Number 3717. Resolution approving the declaration of certain non-buildable county-owned property on Elizabeth Avenue in Baltimore, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution Number 3817. Resolution approving the declaration of certain non-buildable county-owned property near Holly Berry Road in Severna Park, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution Number 3917. Resolution approving the declaration of certain non-buildable county-owned property near Island View Drive in Annapolis, Maryland as surplus property. Resolution Number 4017. Resolution approving the declaration of certain non-buildable county-owned property on Old Riverside Road in Brooklyn Park, Baltimore, Maryland as surplus property.
Okay. All right. Administration, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office with me at the table, Nancy Noonan and Samantha Harris from Central Services, and Jason Federman from the Office of Law. I will go through these, and then maybe if there's questions at the end, we can answer them if that works for the council.